All right, well, we get to start over. Good morning, everyone. I'm Deanna Fierro and I am your fourth district school board candidate for Richmond Public Schools. Having some technical difficulties. I forgot to turn the mic on. How do you like that? And I'm literally the only one in my Zoom video. Okay, so with that, we are 10 minutes in and normally this meeting lasts for about 30 minutes. And so with that, I'm going to go over a little bit and I welcome you to come back if you can't stay with us for the whole meeting. If you can't, just come on back when you have a chance and finish watching the rest of this morning meeting. So with that, before we get started, if you've already seen the news, our nation had a loss of an amazing gentleman. So Representative John Lewis passed away last night at age 80 and he is a legend in the civil rights movement. And I would like to take just a moment of silence to recognize his passing. So please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. So coming back to our issue of what we have to talk about today. I have a list of things that I'd actually like to share with everybody. It's a couple of things, and this is why I was letting everybody know ahead of time that we would be going over just a little bit. And with that, I'd like to start with just some housekeeping. Our yard sign distribution is going very well. If you live in the fourth district, you might already see some of our yard signs out on Forest Hill in your neighborhoods. And so they are still free. They're still available. We just suggest that you make a donation so that we can continue buying more yard signs for other neighbors. But they are still free. And if you go onto the website, dianafierro.com, you can order yours and I will deliver it. One of the things I like about the yard sign distribution is that I've been able to knock on doors, walk away from the door and just to let people know that I've dropped off their yard sign. And then from a distance, I get to have an introduction. So I get to introduce myself to neighbors who have been following me and who are supporting me. And sometimes we have just a short little conversation. So that feels really great. With that, if you are interested in having a conversation, if you'd like to share some of your questions, your concerns or comments about Richmond Public Schools or any questions related to school-related issues in education here in the state of Virginia, I am open to having conversations and scheduling some conversations. So you can go to the website and on our website, you'll see schedule a meeting as one of the options. And we can either schedule a phone call, a Zoom meeting, which have been so much fun because some neighbors have scheduled one with other neighbors. So I've had an opportunity to meet several people that way. And you can even schedule a doorstep visit. And the doorstep visit is by invitation, of course. I come to your home and knock on the door, step away from your door, and we have a conversation for about 30 to 45 minutes. Today, we will actually have our first kind of backyard conversation with neighbors. I was lucky enough to have a supporter organize that. It's going to be a very small party. About 10 individuals will be socially distanced or physically distanced. And I'll have a chance to have a conversation with people. And hopefully we'll win the support of more neighbors in the district. So if that's something that you're interested, please let me know. And if you're probably wondering what is going on with canvassing, I continue to hold off on knocking on doors because the virus is a serious issue and we are living in a pandemic. And we do not know how some people will feel with, first of all, a stranger knocking on their door. And I want to respect that. So possibly we will distribute some flyers, but as far as knocking on doors and having conversations with individuals, I'm trying to refrain from that as much as possible. I know it's a high risk doing that, especially being a candidate, not the incumbent and being a candidate in this race, a new candidate. But it's something that I think is very important because I really want to respect people's space and their security and how they feel right now during the virus, during this pandemic that we're living through. One thing related to canvassing that I'd like to share. It has come to my attention that the opponent has been knocking on doors at some very late hours. I've had a conversation with a couple of people to see if we have any city ordinances that limit the hours of which people can be knocking on your doors. Some localities in the state of Virginia do actually have that. They expect people to not knock on doors after about eight o'clock. But unfortunately, in Richmond, we do not have that. So I will be posting our city council members' information. Kristen Larson, if you do have a canvasser, if you do have somebody knocking on your door and it is after it gets dark, late hours, or if for some reason you have your ring doorbell set off because somebody is putting flyers at your door in the middle of the night, please, please report that. Please let Kristen Larson know. If you feel unsafe, please call, please call the police if you have to. It's very inappropriate to knock on somebody's door late at night. It's, I think it's, there's a lack of respect there and there's a lack of consideration of people's privacy and safety. So with that, we also have our mailers coming up pretty soon. I'm so excited. We have switched companies for printing and we have gone with Gibson Print, who is a union printer. And our yard signs were already getting printed by them. They're great individuals, great business. And I'm excited to have our mailers going out to residents in the fourth district precinct. So keep an eye out for that. And our website, one thing I'd like to talk about the website is if you have not gone on there and you have not had an opportunity to read my platform, please take a minute to do so on there. You'll see the main ideas of how I expect to be an asset to the school board, how I expect to serve our fourth district residents and all of the community of Richmond Public Schools. And if you are here now and you're still on the fence about who you are going to vote for in the fourth district, I ask you to do this. Challenge the incumbent to show you where he stands on several issues. Ask him to show you his platform or something written or some sort of documentation where you can hold him accountable to how he feels he will do a better job another time around if he were to get elected again. Ask him what successes he has done. What motions did he bring to the table to the school board that won the support of the other school board members and was an actual contribution to our school division? Unfortunately, you can't find that information right now. So it's sad that we're residents of the fourth district have to do all of that research by themselves instead of being able to find it easily and readily. It's not available to them like that. So if you're on the fence or if you already are a supporter, but you want to know what the incumbent plans to do better for us, ask him. I ask you to please ask him and hold his feet to the fire and make sure that he is giving you the answers that you seek. So with that, let's move on to another topic. Our campaign, Deanna Fierro for Richmond School Board, has gotten access to all the materials and tools we need to be able to set up a phone bank. So I'm very excited to, this week, I'll start recruiting volunteers from the district and outside of the district to participate in our phone bank event, hopefully in about a week or two. So it's going to take us a little bit of time to organize our volunteers because we're doing it all online. So it's all through emails. It's all through Zoom meetings to prepare for our first phone bank activity. And I can tell you just in general, the phone bank will probably be a whole day, but it will, and it will be done through Zoom and volunteers will be able to check in and out throughout the day. So I'm excited for that. Now with that, let's get into our first topic. I know a lot of people are, know that Richmond Public Schools voted to go to continued distance learning for the first semester of the new school year. And with that, there are a lot of concerns that families have with how is, what is that going to look like? I can tell you that while I don't work for Richmond Public Schools and my daughter is technically a student of Richmond Public Schools. She attends one of the specialty schools. It's still a concern of mine. And having to make the choice of her going for virtual was something that her and her father and I decided. And I'm also an employee of a neighboring school division who has yet to make their decision on what reopening will look like in the fall. So my nerves are not settled yet. I still don't know what that's going to look like, both as an educator and as a parent. So I know, I don't know. I'm not going to pretend that I know exactly how everybody feels and what everybody's going through, but I believe that I can relate. I believe that our feelings are very similar. So with that, one of the things I'd like to share is that if you are in a position where you, for example, if you're a teacher and you are in a position where you do not have to worry about childcare and you do not have to worry about, now you don't have to worry about going back to work, I ask you to try to find ways to help connect families, help connect members of the community that you know with resources that will help them make the continued distance learning plan a real option and not a burden. So for example, and I'm not saying everybody needs to do it exactly the same way. There are different ways to help. For example, for myself, I am a teacher. So when we went into closure, I did not have to worry about work anymore. Still going to get paid, but I didn't have to worry about going into work and putting myself at a high risk of getting sick. My daughter is old enough to where I can leave her home alone for a couple of hours. She is 14. So I'm in a position where if I choose to and if I feel comfortable with the risk, I can volunteer in my, in my community and throughout the city. And so that's what I have done since we've been out since the closure. I've been volunteering at the food distribution center, interpreting for our Spanish-speaking families. I've been trying to find ways too to even distribute some food from the center to families who cannot get there. And most recently, now I've used a website called EduSwap that I developed here on Facebook as a marketplace for educators across the region. That means all the neighboring school divisions to share resources and tools. I've started to shift it to sharing online sources and distance learning resources for educators. So that's, that's how I feel like I'm starting the process of trying to make sure that this option is a real option for our families who are not, you know, who are not in the same position as the rest of us or everyone else. With the reopening, one of the things that, you know, one of the main things that I'm really looking for in Richmond Public Schools is that they really, really increase their level of communication and engagement with our families. With virtual learning, I can tell you through my own experience, communicating and connecting with our families is going to be critical and it's going to be difficult. And we're going to have to get very creative on how we're going to connect with our families and how are we going to support our most vulnerable individuals? And when I say that, I mean, how are we going to connect our families who have students with exceptional education needs with the right resources, the information and the supports that they're going to need? How are we going to connect with our families of English language learners? And I'm tired of seeing just a flyer going out and expecting them to take the full responsibility to find the information or connect with the information. So we have to go further than that. And how are we going to support the families with students that are specifically pre-K through third, even up to fifth grade, where their learning is very critical? It's a very critical time in their development. I can tell you in my own experience, when my daughter was getting, going into second grade, making sure that she had a strong second grade teacher with an experience, a reputation of being able to really engage students in learning to read was important for me. And even in up into middle school, you know, that was important to me, making sure that my daughter was a strong reader. And so there couldn't be a more critical time to, to be a parent and to be nervous about, you know, how am I going to make sure that my child has those supports? I also want to remind people that our educators and educators in general, we really have our heart into what we do into our profession and our practice. And I know, because I'm already thinking about it, I'm already planning and I'm already searching for resources and tools that when, when we do go back in person, we're going to go above and beyond like we always do to try to catch our students up and to give them the instruction that they lost and the supports that they need so that we can get them back where they are and even get them ahead of the game like we've always been trying to do anyways. So are there any questions before I go on to our next two topics? Are there any questions? I don't see any questions today. The mornings, I do like the mornings a lot and I do like my coffee. So going on to our next questions, and if we do go over, I apologize. We had a couple, a little bit of technical difficulties this morning. And I do have some very important topics that I'd like to talk about. So with the virtual learning as well, I wish I was already on the school board because I could make some recommendations from my experience of virtual teaching. In my own school division, right now I am working summer school virtually as a summer school coordinator. And I can tell you what I've seen is very interesting. It's a good preview, I guess, of what's going to happen for many of our schools that are going to continue distance learning. I can tell you right now that I would recommend to our specialists at the division to really provide a structured outline or pretty much a structured outline for virtual learning so that both our parents and our educators know what they can expect and giving tutorials to our parents so that they know what to look for. That's, I think, is one of the hardest things that's happening with virtual learning. You're basically taking what is known to be the whole school and putting it online. So people's job descriptions are going to kind of change. People's expectations are going to change. And you have to think about it like this. When children are in the building with us, the majority of the responsibility to keep our children engaged falls on us as the teachers and the adults in the building. And now we have, we're shifting that. So with distance learning, the majority of that responsibility is going to fall on our parents and especially on our students. Now, for some students, they might jump on board very quickly with this and take the lead. And parents, some parents will not have to worry about that. For others, this is going to be a whole new routine, a whole new habit for them to check in regularly to stay on top of their assignments. And even for adults, some adults have sometimes not felt like they have to or they need to check in on their students' assignments. And it's kind of, you know, they've trusted that the educators that they have, you know, stay on top of it. And sometimes their students and the teachers do a great job of that. But now, parents have to, parents and guardians are going to have to shift their schedule a little bit and try their hardest to stay on top of what is happening in their students' education virtually. So this is why communication between both parties is going to be very important. So right now, you know, if you are in need of phone service, if you don't have a phone that, you know, is regularly on, you know, for whatever reasons, circumstances, your phone is not always connected or you don't have access to internet or you don't have access to email, you haven't gotten comfortable with that as an adult, you need to do that. We have to get ourselves acclimated to that because that is where our world is now, especially for our children's education. If you're an educator and you haven't been used to emailing or calling or even texting parents, we're going to have to step outside of the box and really push ourselves to that and go, you know, get comfortable with that. We're going to have to consider that. In some cases, we might even have to send, send some printed mail. So organizing your system for communication is going to be critical. Organizing the structure of what your online learning is going to look like is going to be very critical. And I couldn't, I couldn't stress it again, but communication is really going to be our key way to make sure that we are not missing anybody and that everybody is getting the services that they need. So with that, let me go to another topic. And so I know that the school board has a couple of other issues coming up before the school year begins that they will most likely be voting on. And the first one is the SROs. And so the SROs are the School Resource Officers. And I know that with what has been happening politically in our country right now, this has been a hot button issue for a lot of people. There has been kind of not a very clear definition of what, you know, the certain terms. And I'll just come out and say the words to fund the police means. And in there, the topic of SROs has fallen into that. And when this, when the School Resource Officers topic first came out, I was also on the fence. I wasn't sure, you know, how, how I felt about it because in my own experience, the majority of the time, school resource officers that I knew of were great people, were nice people. I thank goodness, I never had to work with one who was the opposite, who was aggressive or who did not know how to behave him or herself at the workplace. And with that, I, you know, I made sure to do what I promised to do in my platform and that was to make sure that decisions are done in a collaborative manner and that I listen to all sides. And so this took me a couple of weeks to really, to really decide how I felt. And so that included researching the topic, looking at data, looking at organizations who are both for and against it and having conversations with individuals throughout our schools about the issue and taking myself out of the topic as well. So that's kind of hard sometimes because we have strong emotions about how we feel about certain things. And this is one of those. And so what I can say now, after, after doing all of this work, is that I noticed that in the 50s, the program when it first developed was, the intent was to connect our communities with our police officers and so that there would be a stronger relationship amongst each other. And after that, in the 90s, with school shootings and issues like that, the dynamic of why we had school resource, resource officers changed. You know, the rationale for that changed. Again, the intent was to keep, now had now shifted a bit to keep our students and our teachers, you know, our educators safe. So I understand that and I will not lie to you. Recently, I shifted from a school where we were indoors, everything was indoors, to an outdoor campus. And so an outdoor campus is, students walk from one building to the other to get to classes and their large windows facing outside. And I'll, I'll tell you the truth. When I started at this new building, my, I was nervous. I was a little bit nervous about it. And I'm definitely more aware of my surroundings now than before. But here's the issue. The School Resource Officer Program, the SRO Officer Program, was not intended to be in replacement of security guards. That was not the rationale. And I think what has happened over the years, both with what is happening in our communities where we have a broken relationship between our police officers and some members of our community, especially individuals, people of color. Because of that and because of lack of resources and not having enough security and not having enough wraparound services, some schools have felt that they had to rely on their school resource officers for security. And unfortunately, just like in other jobs, sometimes we don't have the best fit of school resource officers for schools or for that situation. And so you're asking a resource officer who is supposed to be dealing with some very aggressive behavior, some very serious behaviors that actually do require police presence and applying that into a place, an environment that's meant to be with children. So the discipline that they put out and the place where it's being put in are not proportional to each other. It's not the right setting. And so despite the great relationships that some of us have had with school resource officers, despite all of those experiences that people share and say, well, why would we want to remove them? I've had a great experience. It's not the case for everybody and that's the reality. And we will, when we look at the research, it's just not working. If the, if the intent was to try to build a relationship, a stronger relationship with our police officers and our students, it, it has not worked. And we need to be honest about that. It has not worked for everybody. And so I do stand with supporters of removing the school resource officers from our schools. I do think that that is the right way. I do think that we, and what a better time right now where we are reimagining our schools to reimagine this relationship. And I, I don't want to say that we're, that, you know, you just throw away the opportunity to try to make a relationship. No, I think we need to try something different. We need to do something different, but it, but the program and the process that we have now is just not working. And so I still believe that we have to mend the relationship that police officers have with our community. And we have to use real tactics that work. And that means we have to go towards, towards unit of practices. We have to start using restorative justice and we have to have some real deep, sensitive conversations in safe places with our police officers, our elected officials, our school leaders and our families. I don't think we've put ourselves in a place there yet to really get to those topics. So, so if I had to summarize it, yes, I agree with removing the SROs. But, but I challenge us all as a community to find another way, to find new methods and to use restorative justice to correct this broken relationship that we have with our, our officers and, and our law enforcement so that we can rebuild that relationship so that we can, you know, we can use them and we can utilize them as the resource that they are meant to be. So when that topic comes on, comes up to the school board, I am very interested to see what my opponent has to say about that. So we are about eight minutes over and I, I want to talk about one last topic and I hope I can do this really quickly. And if I don't get to finish it, I'll bring it back up next time. But the topic is on renaming schools. And of course, we're talking about renaming schools even more now because of the removal of the Confederate statues in our city. And so I'd like to share that, yes, I am all for and I have been all for renaming our schools. The names and the symbols have a history that has not, that has not been very good. You know, it represents of things that have hurt our community. But also, as long as we keep them up, they continue to remind us of some very bad feelings that, you know, individuals have had go through some suffering that people have, have had to go through. So I'm completely on board with renaming our schools. I always have been. The only thing though, is that with the renaming of schools, my other recommendation has always been not to rename them again after more people. And I understand, I understand that some people have some very strong feelings about this and that, that with the renaming of schools, they feel that is an opportunity to put another name of another individual who, yes, who has done great things in, in our communities for everybody. But my only issue with that is that, when does it stop? How far will it go? And when will we be able to use, you know, how realistic is it that we're going to continue renaming buildings, creating new statues, putting more funding to new plaques and things like that in order to give, in order to use that as a method for giving all of the people in our community some representation? You know, all of our people of different, different races and cultures representation. And for me, that doesn't work. And for me, that doesn't work. It does not work. As long as I continue to see in the city that we don't have representation on our city council of every member of our community or of a more variety of members of our community, it won't work for me. As long as we have large opportunity gaps between our students of color and their white counterparts, it's not gonna work for me. And as long as in Richmond Public Schools, we continue to kind of gloss over the needs of our English language learners, it's not gonna work for me. And as long as we continue to gloss over the services that we give our students with exceptional education needs, it's not gonna work for me. So instead of us spending more time, and this is my personal belief and I'm totally open to having a conversation with others about this, but as long as we are not meeting the needs of our communities, the real needs of our communities that they have right now and we are not giving them access to opportunities to be at the table and there at the moment of decision-making, then telling me that you're gonna put up a statue of another, of a Latino or Latinx person so that that's the representation I get so that I feel included, it's not, it's not authentic and I think we need to do better than that. So do we, do we have any questions? So we did run over, it's ten forty-one. Normally, this was supposed to last until ten thirty. I would love to have more conversation with everybody. I don't see any questions in the comments. And thank you to everybody who jumped in today. Be sure to share this video. Be sure to share with your friends and that I'm, that I'm running. If you haven't made a donation, please make a donation. I'm very proud to say that, you know, the majority of our campaign is totally funded by donations from members of the community, members of my profession, and I'm very happy to have, have that. But we still need to get my name out there. So if you can, please make a comment, make a Twitter post, make an Instagram post that says, "I'm voting for Deanna Fierro in the fourth district for school board" or "I support Deanna Fierro for school board in the fourth district." Please, please help me out to get the word out and continue being awesome and enjoy the rest of your weekend. Have a good day. Bye-bye.